Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. The time is six o'clock, and we have the presence of a quorum, and this meeting has been duly called, and notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by law. And we are, our first item is an information item, Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Mrs. James, and Board, welcome back. This evening, we're going to begin with an information item that really focuses on staffing. And there's a few pieces of the budget projection for next year to kind of wrap around the staffing so we can see a comprehensive view. I wanted to point out a couple of things before I turn it over to Dina. We've given you an update to the memo you were provided last week that has a few new attachments, including special education terminology references to make, so you're clear on what the positions are, and a few corrections. And we've also given you a one-page document that has the special education staffing requests. Now, I will tell you, this list specifically addresses only the additional FTEs for co-teach and in-class support that focus for next year, but we're working on a more comprehensive document that we'll share with you in the future before you actually, we ask you to vote on that on the 28th. We've been working on it right up to the wire, and it's a very lengthy, as you would expect, and comprehensive Excel spreadsheet that they're trying to summarize at the appropriate level to share with the Board. So we'll get that to you if not this week, and then the week immediately following spring break. So because Steve Bassett is out very ill with the flu, Dina Edgar is going to take his place this evening in presenting this, and Kermit's going to help her out because it does have to do with staffing and human resources as well. So I'll turn it over to Dina and Kermit for this presentation.
Go ahead.
All right. So I'll kick it off. So since we're talking about staffing and budget development, one thing I wanted to kind of kick it off and just let us see if we're prepared to bring on additional staff and whether or not we have the right environment. So as we go through this presentation, I know one of the things I've heard, or the themes I heard last week was around, you know, do we have the systems in place? Do we have correct alignment organizationally? Do we have the right culture and teams? You know, are we, are we working collaborative, collaborative together? And one thing you'll see throughout this presentation is that there was a lot of work put in by a lot of people to get it aligned and making sure that we're aligned to the Board's expectations, and we're driving the right initiatives to meet our student needs. So the overview, what we're going to talk about today is the Fort Ben ISD experience, our Fort Ben ISD workforce blueprint, which is currently our current state, our new position requests, new stipend requests from Edge, and then next steps. Now, how do you describe the Fort Ben ISD experience? You can't describe it in words, so it's easy, easier to put it in pictures. But if you talk to any employee, talk to any staff person or any, any person in the community, the same thing you get back, or the same response you get back is how people make you feel. It's a very supportive organization. You, you know what the expectations are. The communications are transparent. We can reach out to anyone and get an answer. And that captures our Fort Ben ISD experience. But though, that's, that information is very qualitative. It's, it's not system-based. So I believe our Board had a vision to give us a high-level framework of how that should look through an organization. So they got together and built this core beliefs and commitments to align this organization and get us aligned around what's, what's really important, that we have effective and teachers and leaders. We do it in a supportive environment with a high-performing community of learners. So I, I show, I wanted to show an example, how do you actually do this? What does it look like, you know, from a practical standpoint? So basically, what we do is we take our core beliefs, our tightly-held expectation leadership competencies, and we bring it down into a function, and you have this function underneath. This is the HR function, but just think about this organizationally. Each and every person is thinking the same way. And but for the HR organization, the things that we focus on is really attracting, selecting, developing, and retaining top talent. And what we do is we mix this Fort Ben ISD experience through each and every interaction. And you can see this through how we attract. I know April 2nd, we have our Talent Fair coming up. Last year, we doubled our enrollment. To date, we just opened up for, for folks to actually make reservations for it, and we have about 450 people that's already signed up. And so we're, we're still about three and a half weeks off. So we're, we're doing a great job around that, selecting. We've worked together collaboratively with our leadership organization, and we have a robust onboarding and selection process for our principals and assistant principals. And on our developing piece, we're beginning to grow that out with our student leadership under Stephanie Williams. And then also, I think later on, we're going to talk about leadership development or leadership experience model to really capture our, our core leadership talent. So here's, here's a snapshot of where we are today. We have just north of 10,500 employees. A bulk of the employees are sitting in instructional side. As you can see, you've got a breakdown by race, and if you looked at this compared to last year, you see incremental increase on African-American, Asian, and Hispanic population. So we're, we're doing good work. We'd like to move it a little faster to kind of match our, our student population, but we, we are seeing progress. Here's our teacher demographics, just north of 4,500. And you see our demographic breakdown, it's the same. Now, what's interesting about this break, breakdown is when, when you, when the questions asked about your, your race, it's, you know, the first question is, are you Hispanic or non-Hispanic? That's one piece of the breakdown. And then the main categories are black, white, Asian, and other. So even though you see a high number on the white or Caucasian side, you, we, we almost can, you know, hypothetically say, subtract the 13.4 from, from that number, and it'll kind of, it'll even it out. Also, you'll see a big increase in our, in our attrition. We're, we're still digging through what those numbers are, but we're not nearly projecting that for this year. But, but again, we really don't know what our numbers will be until around late May, June, and, and July. And here's the same thing for our leaders. And also, in the areas of Hispanic and African-American, there, there's been an increase in our demographics in the principal category. And then a few of the highlights. Now, one of the things we talked about is really doubling down on this Fort Ben, the Fort Ben ISD experience, and really looking at our systems and processes with how do we attract, retain, and engage the best talent? Well, I talked a little bit about attracting top talent, but also, we, there's a partnership with ACT Houston, and we just, there's 19 people that just went through that's ready to take their tests, and then also get a probationary license or certification to start instructing. I, I see a smile from one of our Board members who successfully went through the program. Also, we, we have other partnerships. We're working with Facility and, and a junior college to work with our facilities group to help them get their GED, because one of the requirements to be a supervisor in the, in the facilities organization is to have your GED or high school diploma. So we're partnering with them to work with an outside agency to give them an opportunity to get their GED. Administrative leave administration. So over the last two years, it's been a decrease in administrative leave administration. So administrative leave is basically whenever we're conducting investigations, employees are out because of something they've done at work, or something they've done outside of work that prevents them from engaging with kids. So two years ago, we, we spent upwards of $700,000 for people out on administrative leave. Last year was $600,000, and this year, we're tracking around 70, or 80,000. So if you think about tight systems, tight processes, and then also the talent that we're bringing in, I think it's helping drive this number down to where it is today. Still got quite a bit of work to do in that area, but we're, we're beginning to see some of the fruits of our labor. Unemployment costs, I think about four years ago, we were north of $1 million in our unemployment costs. I think that next year's around $800,000, and then it kind of flat-lined between 300 and 250,000. And we're staying pretty constant in that area, but we're looking to see even further decrease as we, we put in more processes and systems in place. And then also, I, I think later on, there's a position that we're asking for to really help not only just track it, but to really develop plans and, and strategies around really shaping that to help our administration out and, and understand what's driving those Now, I know you've seen this slide quite a few times, and, and I'm not going to spend much time on it, but each of our organizations, as they were building out their plans to align with the strategic objectives for our, our district, they, they follow this similar process. You know, again, we start with our strategy, but once we all agree what our strategy is or our strategic priorities for this year and next year, we have to build out a structure to support that. And I think what Dina's going to talk about over the next few slides is really the structure to support the organization to help us achieve our strategic priorities and objectives.
Thank you, Kermit. Good evening, President James, Dr. Dupree, Board of Trustees. So as Kermit mentioned, I'm going to start off talking about our campus and non-campus staffing recommendations, and then we're going to move into the budget update, and we'll talk a little bit about fund balance strategies. So campus staffing recommendations are based on our staffing guidelines that were established in 2014 at 22 to 1, and then we give large campuses, over 900 students, some special consideration, and that's 900 in average daily membership. Enrollment projections are based on our demographers' low-growth scenarios for 1617, and then we have the new boundaries associated with the opening of Anne McCormick Sullivan Elementary.
I'll change it.
You got it? Okay. In addition, we solicited input from campuses and departments for critical requests that are outside of formula-generated FTEs. At this time, we're not seeing that we need to add an ele, any elementary teaching staff at the aggregate level based on the staffing guidelines, but we are monitoring enrollment very carefully, and we will make adjustments as we see, as we see needed. Special education also falls outside of regular formula, and we've incorporated the co-teach model into this year's ASK. I know on the slide here, it says 22 and 1/2 teachers and 27 aides. That actually just changed this afternoon. So we're looking at 26 and 1/2 teachers and 23 aides. The difference in the dollar figure was immaterial, so I'm not really concerned, but we'll have that update to you at the next board meeting. It's also important to note that special education is still processing a large number of referrals, and they will continue to do so throughout April and, throughout March and into April. Approximately 75% of these referrals will be actionable. So, you know, once numbers are finalized, we'll ascertain if additional staff will be needed at that time. So we're adding a second assistant principal and counselor to support the anticipated enrollment at Sullivan. We will be moving two part-time social work positions at Willow Ridge and Marshall High Schools to full-time, and that's to support the needs there and also to boost attendance. And finally, we'll be adding two bilingual dyslexia teachers to serve students at our bilingual elementary campuses. The total cost to the general fund for these campus requests is about 2.6 to 2.7 million, depending on that special education change that, at the last minute. Okay, as noted in last week's presentation, we are requesting the addition of seven FTEs to support the Edge learning model at two campuses. We are requiring, requesting action at this evening to facilitate the hiring process of those, those FTEs. So we're requesting two master teachers for special education, a parent educator at each campus, and that parent educator will be charged to Title I funds, an additional PE teacher at each campus to support that daily physical activity that we're looking to infuse, and then one district-level master teacher, but that person will also help the teacher development team in regular district-wide activities. The total cost of the seven positions is about $430,000, with $90,000 being charged to Title I funds. Okay, so this next slide is a review of the proposed Edge stipend schedule as we presented last week. Master teachers will receive a stipend of $15,000. Mentor teachers will receive a $9,000 stipend, with the bilingual teacher getting an additional $1,000, and that's in lieu of the $4,000 stipend that the bilingual teacher would normally get. The licensed professional counselor, the LPC, will also receive a stipend of $9,000, and that's to cover the, the highly-qualified status that we're going to require of that person. So we're attracting the best-in-class principals with a $3,000 signing bonus, and then the Edge teachers will earn a retention bonus of $1,500 each year, plus an additional $500, and that's to cover the three-day training that we're requiring of them. Okay, so as mentioned earlier, we requested input from campuses and departments on that request outside of formula, and this was for non-campus staffing. We received an initial response of about $9 million in additional positions. So after an extensive vetting process, leadership whittled that total request down to about 1.9 million. We approved positions that were uniquely aligned with the district's strategic plan and overall goals. And I, the Board received a packet, I think, on Friday, and that detailed the description of the position, all the jobs, job descriptions, and the alignment with the strategic goals. So tonight, I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the requested positions. So we're looking at three positions aligned with district curriculum in GT, instructional support, and CTE, two FTEs to promote leadership development that Kermit mentioned earlier, two positions under accountability and program evaluation, and that's to assist us with the, the dashboarding development and balanced scorecards. And then other identified areas under instruction included four LSSPs, and this is to further assist in the identification of special services, and Dr. Hill mentioned this a few, a few weeks ago in her presentation, and then seven behavior support aides for special education. Under learning development, we're requesting four facilitators and five behavior support aides, and the behavior support aides are going to be used as like an intermediate intervention before behavior issues have to be referred on. So it's a step before behavior escalation, if you will. And then finally, under operations, we'll be requesting two communications positions, and then a district treasurer to establish and manage our commercial paper program, as well as a robust investment portfolio for us. The total cost to the general fund for these requested non-campus positions is about 1.9 million. And then these requests in total, combined with the previous approved campus requests at that February 15th board meeting, will increase the general fund by 6.38 million in total. So in addition to the general fund additions, we are requesting 15 positions for the expansion of our extended learning program, and then the one FTE to assist with unemployment claims, and Kermit mentioned that previously, and then two program managers to help with design and construction, and they'll also perform observations. So the total cost of these positions is approximately $771,000. This is out of three different funds. It'll be enterprise funds, bond funds, and the unemployment fund. Okay, so let's take a look at our current projected 1617 revenues. Local revenues include tax collections and then other local, and that would include like gate receipts, interest earnings, summer school, things like that. The local portion makes up 62% of our overall revenue, with state aid accounting for 37%. The remaining 1%, it mainly consists of federal funding for MAC and SHARs, and those are for Medicaid-eligible students. And while it's only 1%, it is $7 million, so it's, it's pretty significant. And we, we're enhancing that program as well to, to generate more revenues. Okay, so moving into budget, we are still currently anticipating ending 1516 very favorably, and this is largely due to increased revenues. Again, property values and tax collections are working in our favor this year. We're estimating an eight and 1/2 million surplus rolling into our fiscal year-end, and that's the good news. But the flip side of that, the bad news is, we're going to need to use the surplus to get us through the next few years where that formula does 180 turnaround on us. So in 1617, we're experiencing the exact opposite situation. In the formula, the, the, it's an overall loss in revenue. And again, this is mainly due to the, the ratio of that prior-year comptroller value, that CPTD value over the appraised district value, and it flips, and that's why we're experiencing that loss. So we're currently looking at a deficit of approximately 5.3 million, and that's with everything that we're discussing tonight all built in. I will mention that we are continuing to strategically identify ways to reduce costs and reallocate resources to manage funding restrictions imposed by the state of Texas, while still maintaining, you know, our overall vision and, and strategic objectives. Okay, so I'm going to try and step you through this, this next slide. What you're looking at is, in, in the leftmost column, in, in the darker red, is our current fund balance, and this is committed and assigned, and it's as we presented it in the CAFR right now. So that's as it is now. As you move into fiscal year end 2016, we're looking at that non-spendable decreasing by about 3 million, and that's for an 18-month property and casualty insurance that we're going to prepay. We left major maintenance the same, but we may be using some of that, we may be recommending the use of some of that on projects that are coming up. We moved the instructional materials reserve forward unchanged, and this is in the event that the state of Texas doesn't fully fund future textbook adoptions. We may or may not need to use that. We moved the reserve for transportation, that 2 and 1/2 million, to the new instructional facilities reserve. We were able to absorb that 2 and 1/2 this year, and it's already in the budget, so we can take that reserve and move it down to help us with our new facilities in the outer years. Then we added a reserve for economic stabilization, and this is to assist with the smoothing out of the next few years that I just mentioned. If you take a look at the economic stabilization line for fiscal years ending 16 and 17, those two numbers add up to 8.6 million, which is our anticipated surplus. So those two numbers right at the, the second from the bottom, the, the 5.3 and the 3.2, they add up to what our surplus is. So we're kind of using that surplus to get us through. And then again, the assigned fund balance remains the same, and that anticipates our purchase over rollover, or purchase over year-to-year rollover. So we, we kind of anticipate about 5 to 6 million. As we move into year end 17, the non-spendable goes back up to, again, cover that property and casualty insurance. Major maintenance and the instructional materials will remain unchanged just for this model. We'll move the new instructional facilities reserve forward to assist us with the opening of the campuses in 17 and 18. And then we have the remaining balance is the anticipated surplus, that 3.2 million moving into year end 17, and that's under economic stabilization reserve. And again, that's the assigned assumes RPO rollover. So that's kind of the plan for the fund balance strategy, and the idea here is to use the anticipated surplus along with the additional fund balance strategies to navigate us through the next few years where property values are, are not growing as, as fast as they were previously, and, and then the, the addition of the new campuses with the added expense Okay, so our board policy requires us to have a 60-day reserve, plus an additional 30 days for state revenue stabilization. So what you're looking at here is, based on the strategies described in the previous slide, we would still be in line, in alignment with board policy, and if you look at that, just that bottom gray bar, we're at 90 days pretty much across the board, even with utilization on the, of the fund balance that we're recommending. Fiscal 1718 is a legislative year, and while we're not hearing encouraging things at the state level, we do anticipate some type of positive outcome stemming from litigation. We're just concerned about the capacity given the state of the state. So while we may have a favorable outcome, are they going to be able to, you know, really give us any additional funding? It's important to stress that given no new revenue, revenue sources, we will have to continue to look for additional efficiencies and make necessary reductions as we continue to align the funding. We do have to fulfill the mission and the vision of the district. Okay, so our next steps, we'll be looking for board action on Edge positions this evening, and then action on the remaining positions at the March 28th board meeting. And this will release positions in time for our All-Star Talent Draft on April 2nd. Also in April, we'll be bringing contract renewals and compensation recommendations forward. We'll, we'll have received the CAD values at that time, so we're currently estimating a 9% property value increase. You know, each 1% is $3 million, so if that comes in a little higher, you know, things look great. That comes in around April 25th. And then, of course, we will formally call the date of the budget hearing, as is required by law, in May. And moving into June, we'll hold the budget hearing at the first June meeting, and then we'll present a final budget amendment in June as well, and then, of course, the adoption of the 1617 budget at the second June board meeting. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Edgar, and thank you, Mr. Spears. I'm sure we have some questions. There's a lot of information, so we'll just probably need to get a few clarifying questions. Mr. Rice, would you like to lead us off?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Edgar. I just wanted to go over a couple of things. With the Edge program, and I'm trying to find the, the exact page, but we talked about in the campus IR plans are going to include five days of additional professional development for all the teachers and the administrative staff at our IR campuses. Is that still in the budget, or has that been reduced to three days?
It is actually still in there.
It's still in there?
Because we have the two IR campuses, and then we had some, some action for McAuliffe. It's still in there, and so we, we have not tightened that up yet. That will, we didn't know quite exactly what that was going to look like, so we know we're still carrying it, we didn't take it out. We might want to do something more for McAuliffe, so we kind of just kept it in there so we could have some flexibility, but, you know, we'll, we'll tie that out as we, as we get further along in the process.
And help me remember what that value was.
It's 577,000.
Five, 577, okay. And then, am I, excuse me, am I understanding that the total add for the employees that you've talked about, is that $7 million?
It's, it's 6.3.
6.3. And 77, was the 770,000?
Out of other funds.
Okay, so that's out of other funds, so that doesn't come under the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I'm understanding that our revenue estimate, we're in the 1516 year, and that was the good news. The 1617 year, we're going, we're decreasing by $11 million. Is that right? 586,000 down to 579?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Million, I mean. But we're keeping the operating expenditures at the 586 for next year. And we're, we're making up the difference with our own rainy day fund, if you will, economic stabilization fund. 5 million next year and 3 million the following year? At the same time, adding almost 1,000 students?
That's correct.
And keeping the tax rate at $1.04 for our M&amp;O?
Yes, sir.
Which, that's pretty darn good. And am I to understand that now the state, the state's percentage, I can't find that slide, is down to 37%?
That's correct.
And we're at, what are we, 62%? Is that what that slide showed?
Yes, sir.
62%, and it seems like a few years ago, we were closer to 52% for local taxes and 48% from the state.
It's been a paradigm shift for us.
Yes, very much so. All right. And then the last question is on the fund balance. Can't find all my notes, I'm sorry. Can you tell me- Can you tell me what, explain to me, I see our, I guess it's slide 20. So we'll just look at this year, 2015-16. We have a committed fund balance of 26 million, state revenue stabilization of 46. What is the state revenue stabilization?
That's also committed fund balance, actually.
And what is that comprised of, or what is it for, or why do we have it?
Okay, in our fiscal policy, we have undesignedated fund balance requirement of 60 days. And then we pulled off 30 days into committed for state revenue stabilization, and...
That's our own?
It's our, it's for...
Line item?
It's our, yes, it is. It's just for, but it's, so altogether, it's a 90-day basically reserve between the...
So that's like our own rainy day fund, Mr. Rice?
Right. But we have that stabilization fund, and we still, is that the, we still have the 90-day? Where is our 90-day?
Well, the undesignedated is, has to be 60 days, and then the state revenue stabilization is the additional 30. So together, those two line items are the 90-day.
Which is the state revenue and the unassigned?
Correct.
Okay. And that gives us 96 days of operating expenses this year, and 91 days the following, and 90, okay. And then, okay. So we, for now, we can take care of 1617 to 1718?
That's correct.
At our present rate, if you will?
Uh huh.
Okay, very good. And thank you very much for a very good presentation.
Thank you.
All right, what other questions do we have? Mr. Verdine?
I wanted to, I wanted to make a comment. Mr. Rice alluded to this a little bit, but the, originally, the 2016-17 deficit made me a little bit nervous, but I was happy to see the economic stabilization line on slide 19 that we were talking about. I just wanted to say I appreciated that planning ahead.
Thank you.
That's good stuff. That makes me feel good. And once again, so I understand it correctly, we're just simply putting away previous year's surplus funds to stabilize the shortages in the future. Is that simple?
That's correct. And mainly, it's, again, a factor of the funding formula and the way the CPTD works with the CAD. And, you know, our CPTD is going to be growing because it's prior year experience over current year actual appraisal district numbers. So it just doesn't work out in the funding formula.
Right.
So we're going to use that money to help us smooth that transition into the next outer years.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's a great presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. We were just looking at the fund balance strategies back on, yeah, page 20, the next So the, in 1617, the over/under, it's got, looks like an under of 1.1 million, but then it has 91 days, so shouldn't it be less than 90 days?
Such an excellent question. So, you know, I realized this after the slides went out, but here's what's going on. And Brian, wherever you are, I was prepared to answer this question. So the top portion is calculating, making the calculation on the under/over on the 90 days based on 12 months, dividing by 12 months, and then multiplying by three months. The 91 days is a calculation based on days. So the, if I change the calculation on the 90, on the under/over 90 to days, we're actually at a positive 976,000. So it's a factor of really rounding, if you, you know, because sometimes you have 30 days, sometimes you have 31 days. But if you change it to days, more positive.
All right, so, okay.
But that's a, that's a good catch.
But 91 days is there, okay.
All right, Mr. George, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate it is pretty interesting, like our, you know, my colleagues mentioned, and I think it is, I think a couple of questions, and you said our deficit is going to be 5.3 million, and then you anticipate the next year could go down to 3. Is that, did I?
Well, yeah, in the outer year, in 1718, we, what we have set up there is 4 and 1/2 million for the opening of the new schools to assist with that, and then we have the 3.2 there to assist in the event that we need it.
Sure. And also in, so, I mean, we are not planning, we don't know what is going to happen after, you know, two, three years, but still, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Rice was saying, you know, with, under the circumstances, it looked like our state of, our school is pretty, looking very good, in my opinion. And also, another question I have, maybe the question for Mr. Spears, talking about the hiring process. And we had this discussion many times, and one of my question, you always believe in system, you know, and anytime I talk to you, it make me feel very good, you, and I believe in system, because the reason is, if you are not there, then still the system will take care of the... So my question, I guess, in that area, how we are making sure the new talents coming to Fort Bend ISD is given a fair chance as far as in the hiring process?
Okay. I mean, the process for applying for a position, I mean, you go through basically one ocular, you put in your application, but depending on the position, there are many people that apply for those positions. And what we do is we screen applicants based on qualifications. If you still have a big pile of people, we use a nondiscriminatory factor for even reducing the pile even more. So let's say you need a master's degree, you need three years of experience, and some type of certification. If I still have a big pile of people left, what I may do is say, you know, certification is necessary, the master's degree is necessary. Now I'm asking, now I'm looking for people with seven or more, eight or more years of experience. So now I've just narrowed that group down to a size where I can actually interview. If I can't find people based on that group, then what I would do is expand it. But we use nondiscriminatory factors to make our selection process. So the system works.
Okay, okay. Because, you know, we represent the community, and I, we had that discussion, and I sometimes hear that people complain, you know, you have to know somebody to get a job in Fort Bend ISD kind of thing, you know? So I just want to make sure, in that process, I sometimes feel like we are missing on, you know, talents. So we just want to make sure everybody is given a fair chance to at least present their story. Does that make sense to you?
I totally agree, but I also understand this is a relationship organization, very strongly based on relationships. And one practice that I've seen with teachers is, at the beginning of the hiring season, instead of them just applying for the position, they will send the hiring manager an email, they will visit the campus, they will hand off a pamphlet. So what that may do is give them an advantage over someone else that just submits a resume. Not to say that the person that just submitted online is not qualified, but the other candidates just being a little bit more aggressive, which may actually bring them to the top, so...
Sure. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Thank you.
Mrs. Tolson? Thank you. So just to continue with that theme, first of all, I think it's very important that we get the best person for the job. And I appreciate all of the data. I think it's helpful, but I think we've seen that what we need are, is the best person that's a good fit for a particular campus or a particular position. So I appreciate you putting, and the whole team putting that system in place to make sure that we get that, because our kids deserve that, so I just wanted to say that. Questions about staffing? So we're up to 26 and 1/2 special ed teachers and to 20, and down to 23 aides. Did y'all say why that changed? What was that about? Do we know why?
I just know it was a recalculation.
Can you make sure that's turned on?
Hello, good evening. Is that on? Okay. So, you know, it's changing, things are changing every day, but when I started this process of going through all of the data, we started about a month ago. And so, so when we got all that finalized and we sent it in, I went and met with all of our coordinators again this week, who have gone to campuses, staffed with campuses. We have PPCD students that are coming up from PPCD programs that'll be going to schools. We've had some students that have initially qualified, and we had some follow-up campuses, I mean, follow-up conversations with the campus. So when I see something that doesn't look right, you know, I'll ask, let's go back and look, and let's talk and see. So that's why. And we anticipate that it should be a pretty good projection. Like Deana said, we have some, we have about 500 more initial evaluations, still, I mean, total, so about 375 of those, we anticipate will qualify. So we may come back, you know, late May, June, and need a little bit more, but it won't be major program. It would be probably some support staff.
And that was going to be my next question, is that, so we, we're anticipating what may happen, not only with additional students that will be eligible, but also additional student, I mean, we're doing all our end-of-the-year ARD meetings right now, so in those individual education plans, we're anticipating, this number is anticipating what we think we will need, but we could need more.
We could need more, but we still, when, you know, we asked the campuses to go through the staffing process and project with the idea of co-teach coming. So as we projected, our, the numbers that you have received are based on projections. In addition, for our specialized programs, we know some of those will grow in some areas. So we, you know, if we have, for example, four students in a program, that might seem low, but we know by the end of the year, that program will go up to eight to nine students. So we know we don't need to cut staff in that area. So we think about the trends in the specialized programs at the campuses, as well as the projected staffing information that we receive back from the campuses when we made those recommendations.
Okay. One other question. So is co-teach, I know we piloted that this year at a few campuses. Are we expanding that to all campuses? Are we targeting certain campuses? What is that going to look like next year?
Well, when we, our staffing, and we asked our campuses to staff on every student with co-teach in mind, so our expectation is that co-teach is on every campus. The, you know, the level of co-teach, some campuses may feel like, with the staffing they have, with the support staff, the teachers and the staff they have at campus, and with the students, they want to do more, you know, I don't know that there'll be four sections of co-teach for four core across the board. There may be some campuses that do complete, you know, English and math, and maybe some will do science and social studies, and maybe some will say, hey, I just want to start off with English this year. But the expectation is that we will be doing it at every campus in some form or fashion. And actually, the principals are looking forward to it, they just want it, the staff.
Sure.
And so the second piece of that is, I think, the support, you know, so we are providing a lot of staff development this summer, and we believe that with staff development and with the staffing, some campuses are going to take off and are going to do fine, and some are going to need a little bit more support. So we've identified about 20 campuses that we expect to provide more support from our department, modeling, follow-up staffings, to help move it along a little bit faster.
Good. You answered my next question, which was going to be professional development and support for campuses that have not done this at all, because I know some do, some have a history of doing it anyway, and some have a history of never doing it, so I think that that's smart. And I also wanted to thank you guys for considering this and giving teachers and campuses the support that they need, because, you know, there's nothing that takes the place of staffing whenever you're looking at doing, putting these kind of programs out there, so thank you for that.
Before Dr. Hill steps away from the microphone, can I ask her another question? With regard to the behavior support aides and those that are listed, are those, it says district-wide, are they roaming from place to place? Are they going to be assigned in a, at a school? How does that work? Could you explain what that looks like a little bit?
Yes, and I use this model, we kind of created this model in my last district, like other districts have used it, very effective. So we hire peer professionals but that are highly trained, so we probably train them quite a bit if they haven't had prior experiences as well. But we're looking for peer professionals who've had training with working with kids with severe behavior, with severe, you know, developmental delays, and so, you know, it's a higher level of trained staff member. And so we're going to put them, I mean, every week we'll have a schedule, and sometimes that schedule might change during the week, because it's based on needs. But we would typically identify, there's a student at a campus, for example, that may be in a general education classroom that is really struggling behaviorally, and the campus is saying, I think that we need the student to go to a more restrictive environment. So we usually have, you know, LSSPs come in, behavior plans, behavior, you know, sometimes it's some of the staff from our office, and make recommendations, and oftentimes, the campuses say, okay, we can do this, but we just need an extra set of hands, we can't do this with the staff we have. And we know that when we see behavior, and we're trying to change behavior, sometimes we see a spike in the behavior before we see the behavior settle down. Or sometimes we have kids that are having medication changes and just need some time to, you know, to let that respond. And then sometimes we might see that after doing that for, whether it's three weeks or six weeks, or whatever the case, this is not working, we do need to go more restrictive. So, you know, the idea would be to keep, help keep kids in their placement and not to have to go more restrictive, but also to support campuses, that peer professional position, part of that job description is to train other peer professionals. So as we come in and develop the behavior plan, the professional does, they'll give that to the peer professional, they'll collect data, but they also will train the pairs in that classroom on data collection, on implementation, with the idea of when they back out, that peer professional or those peer professionals have also received some increased staff development and training. So could be, you know, a week, could be six weeks, with the idea of where the need of the student, students are.
And who, is there, there's a coordinator or something that supervises them and keeps up with them?
Yes, I mean, I did that in my last district, I don't know, this district is kind of busy. So, but there will be someone, it needs to be someone that takes in all the, so either Michelle or I, because it would take, we get a lot of calls from different people for different things and just trying to coordinate. But somebody will re-coordinate it and communicate to the campuses, this person will be here, they'll be here from this time to this time, that peer professional goes out, and so, of course, the expectation for hiring for that person will be someone that we can depend on, that is, you know, able to get around the district, but also, you know, dependable as far as going into a campus, dealing with a lot of different personalities, and so on. So I've had good success with this, and I think that also, I didn't go to Clark County, but when Dr. Hill went with the team, they also noted that Clark County had something similar, and that was one of the things that I think that they brought back as something that they wanted us to look at.
Okay, well, that's good to know. That's very helpful, because I was going to ask if this had been modeled somewhere else.
If I may, that's the same way with the RTI, is regular aides that are trained in the same way with crisis prevention, intervention strategies, and they would have exceptional training also, and if a student is escalating in behavior, rather than a campus going straight to DAEP for persistent misconduct, we would put an aide in there to help the teacher and the student work through that, so that we can try to stem our discretionary placements and our over-discretionary class removals of certain groups.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Excellent. Good.
Would you like to make a comment or ask a question?
I do. I apologize for being late, I got stuck in traffic and worked late, but I do have a question for Dr. Hill, is what are we doing in the general ed, for our general ed teachers who are having to work with our special education students? I know we have, we can't staff every, you know, classroom with a peer professional. I know we have, we can't staff every, every, you know, classroom with a peer professional, but what kind of training are we going to provide for our non-restrictive classrooms, for our teachers, that makes sure that they understand how to deal with our children, with their, with their, um, IEPs and their, their BIPs? 'Cause I think maybe there, there is a disconnect there, what's that, what's our plan for that?
And we've continued to have questions about, you know, general ed, um, teachers and providing them the training. Again, I don't think it's the general ed teachers don't want the training, I think it's trying to figure out, how do we squeeze it in with everything else going on? So, some of that, we've been working with Stephanie Williams, um, as they recreate the, the process, the learning plans and all that, that, that are the actual staff development plans for teachers for next year. Um, we have a, a whole bunch of staff development this summer, focused on things, topics that we want general ed teachers to come to, and then we will develop and, and provide staff development during the year for staff, uh, general ed teachers. And, and some of that is working with campus principals to get them, to release them, subs, all of those things. We, I think the staff development is there, we know what to do, it's trying to find the time to do it during the school day, in the summer, how do you get the staff in to get the training, and, and have follow-up time for that. So it is definitely on our radar, we have plans, um, and I think it's one of our top priorities, we've talked about, we've already done some training this year for, you know, students that are twice exceptional in that general ed setting, and how do we help teachers understand and work with kids with those, um, high, those needs? And then also, again, just ongoing training on behavior strategies and, and basic IEP implementation.
Thank you. I would definitely like to see that when we do our training, I know you've got the three days of training, that we, as a district prioritize in our training modules, that each teacher has to have some type of special education training. Now, whatever that is, based on the needs, that you are prioritized that training, but I think that's imperative, just like any type of ethics training, just any type of mandatory training, that all of our teachers, um, have that priority with their training this year.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and of course, I've been saying that for a couple of years now, so I think that that's, not only that, but there's, with this co-teach model that we're going to, it provides an opportunity for another teacher in there that can model, and perhaps even coach, and some of that stuff, that, those things that, that they've, they've been trained on previously. So I think it opens up doors of opportunity for us to do that as well. So thank you for that. I had the same question about the behavioral interventionists, so thank you guys for providing that information, and I like that idea, 'cause I've been asking too about getting those interventionists on the campuses, um, where there are high, where there are high needs, um, not just in special education, but at our other at, at-risk campuses, yeah, where we have kiddos that have a lot of behaviors. Um, so I assume we're gonna be able to use, 'cause it says SPED, and I've been told in the past that because our behavioral interventionists are IDEA funded, that they can't be used for, um, other behavioral support. So, is, I wanna make sure that that's not the case here. We are gonna have our behavioral aides and behavioral interventionists that can help regardless of whether the child is in special ed or not.
The RTI are regular ed. The five RTI behavior aides are gonna be regular ed.
And then the seven others will be special ed?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, are we not allowed to have crossover?
There can be a little bit of crossover, but not much.
Because of the funding respect.
I mean, you know, sometimes we can help out, um, particularly in the evaluation process, there's a little, um, there's a little fine line there. If they're local, that's not as much of a problem, if they're federal, then it becomes more of a problem. But the idea would be, we would start with the five, see how things go, since it's a little bit newer model, particularly on the RTI side, and then if it's successful, come back and ask for more.
Okay.
Certainly, we're not gonna leave someone in a crisis if we, if we, you know, if we can collaborate together.
That's what I make, I wanna make sure of, just when we're planning, is that we're making, I mean, we've left kids that aren't identified, that have, struggle with behaviors, which is why they struggle academically. And so, especially when we're looking at our needs improvement campuses and other campuses that struggle, I wanna make sure that those kids are being, um, supported, as I know you guys are.
We wanna be sure that when we administer RTI, that it's not purely academic, that we also administer to the behavioral needs of regular ed students, and if they do progress up through the levels of RTI, then certainly there would be a referral if we have not been able to meet their needs or address their behavior in the regular ed setting.
Okay, good, thank you. The last comment I wanna make about the budget is just, um, I wanna echo Mr. Burdine's thanks and Mr. Rice's thanks for you guys working on that, 'cause the last time we struggled, we had a riff, if everyone who was here remembers, and, um, I think this, the planning that you guys have done is exceptional. I think, um, I hope that the community sees that, and they understand how much work went into this, to try to make sure that our kids are taken care of, even when we have, uh, a shortage, or when we have economic crisis, or when the state doesn't give us as much money. So thank you guys for your forethought and your planning on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosin. I have a couple of questions on specific, um, positions, and then a couple of general questions also. So my first question is about, um, the CTE program manager. Is that a, um, like a central office type of position, or is it at the site, anticipating for being at the new site, or what is that?
It's preparation for the new site. We're also getting a revamp on state curriculum for CTE this next year, and we will need to make some curriculum changes, and for greater oversight of CTE. We're finding that, um, there is a need for greater oversight, and as we prepare for our new facility, if we're to make it as robust as we want to, and then actually comparing our CTE program with surrounding districts, we're a little bit light in our oversight staffing.
Alright, so it's kind of starting out as curriculum development, and then expanding into more of a program.
Program management, yes, ma'am. And, and program planning, as we go into the new facility.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, with regard to Sullivan Elementary, uh, you have listed on the staffing requests an assistant principal and a counselor, is that because of the expected enrollment increases over what we initially anticipated, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what do, I can't remember what the, what is the expected enrollment?
It's over a thousand, just over a thousand.
Let me, let me clarify, the first time, the first pass, when you approved that a month or so ago?
Right.
You did approve one assistant principal and one counselor, I believe.
Right.
But we knew then, um, that was just the baseline, because the school's projected to be up to twelve hundred, it's a twelve-hundred-seat elementary school, and it's gonna open, I think it, close to a thousand, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
So automatically, they're gonna qualify for the secondary position for the staffing guidelines.
And, and actually, when we first, um, developed that board agenda, we didn't have the low, low-growth projections yet, so it was purely a projected number.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand, so thank you for that clarification. So that's i- in response to what we anticipate the enrollment to be, and based on our staffing guidelines. Okay, so, and then just to clarify, Mr. Rice asked at this at the beginning, but I didn't, wasn't totally grasping it, so from the, all of the staffing together, from the general fund, is about six point four million dollars from the general fund?
That's correct.
And that, and that includes what we approved beforehand?
Yes, ma'am.
And it approve, includes the edge positions that we're looking to approve tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
And it includes these additional requests that we're, we will be voting on at the end of the month?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and then my last question has to do with the fund balance. Um, thank you for all your clarifying questions, teammates, on all of that. I have, uh, on the previous slide, I think it's the previous, no, next slide, sorry, nineteen, um, you've got the, it looked to me like you were taking the transportation, assigned transportation fund balance and moving it to new instructional facilities. Is that something that we've already voted on, or that we will be voting on, or, how does?
That's what you will be voting on when we bring our fund basel, balance resolution to you.
Could you say that again?
You, we'll br- bring a fund balance resolution to you, um, with recommendations for some movement, and that would be included in that.
Okay, so that would be coming at the same time as the budget, or at the end of, sometime at the end of?
During final amendment, yeah, in June.
In, okay, towards the end of the process, but that's what you're anticipating right now, is moving that?
Yes, ma'am.
What's, we have assigned to transportation, and I, I don't, okay, well, we can talk about that when that comes, I was just trying to understand, um, what that meant. So, uh, thank you very much for, um, thank you for your planning, and for all your effort in putting all this together. Do we have any other questions on this? The other thing I'd like to say to both of you is, it's, one thing that I really liked was how, in the information you sent us, you aligned this to what our strategic priorities were, and we could easily see that the things that we've been talking about as our priorities, you had, you know, assigned people and budget and so forth to those, to those efforts. So that was very clear, and I appreciate the way you presented it, it was very easy to follow, and, um, and thank you, so thank you for that.
I do have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Rose Hall.
Um, I might as well just go ahead and ask this, the, um, and now I closed it up, and I forgot, I can't find it, let's see, okay. The, um, one of the positions, the senior consultant leadership experience, okay? Um, that's, is that basically to develop leadership from within the district?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I know we, I hear a lot that, you know, we, we look to the outside, you know, versus inside, and so that, you think that will help with that?
It would definitely give our, um, our leadership, people that are aspiring leaders, emerging leaders, and then people that's currently in position, um, an opportunity to look at different positions within the district, and then help us identify talent where we don't really have a, a robust system to do that right now. And with this position will help us with, in addition to a few other positions that we redirected, will help us identify that talent and make sure that, when we have these aspiring and emerging leaders, that we're giving them the right development. So when we do have a change in leadership, or if someone leaves, we, we have aspiring or emerging talent that can go into those roles.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Mr. George?
Just a, just a clarification from slide number fourteen. Um, there is a position you mentioned there, gifted and talented coordinator. Uh, I'm just wondering, what is the job responsibility for that particular person?
The gifted and talented coordinator, if you'll remember when, um, Ms. Bubar gave her presentation, and I know you're familiar with the state's rubric for exemplary programs, and that's where we want to get, and we're certain that we're not serving students in the manner in which we would like to serve our gifted students. The program's not as robust as we would like for it to be, and that coordinator is to help us in that effort to improve our program, and to help in the curriculum enrichment for that program. So it's twofold.
Is that, is that coordinator working with the campuses, or with the?
From the district level with the campuses in the delivery and in executing the curriculum.
Who he or she will be reporting to?
To Ms. Bubar.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you very much for an excellent presentation, and, and a lot of information presented to us in a very efficient way, so thank you very much for that. Our next item is to convene in closed session, under the Texas Open Meetings Act, and the board will be convened in closed session for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney. We are now convened in closed session.